All right, I'd like to call our boardroom to order for May 2021. I'll please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Maravka? Jones?
Here.
Sluse?
Here.
Sterba?
Here.
Ham?
Here.
Bowden?
Here.
President March?
Here.
We have a quorum. Approver of corrections to the minutes of the May 10th, 2021 Regular Village Board meeting. I've got a copy of that. I had one little correction towards the end when I was thanking people for the cleanup and open house day. Julie Sluse's name got in there. I'm not sure why that was. I just wanted to take that one out of there. Any other corrections? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Maravka.
Okay. Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Next is in your packet where the counts payable in payroll. Payroll in amount of $49,779.41 for the pay period ending 5/24/21. Counts payable in the general fund, $55,776.27, and business development district, $1,900, for a total of $58,903.36. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Ham.
Roll call vote. Maravka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Next, public comment and/or questions. Okay.
There's one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Hi, I want to follow up, and I guess they are relative to ordinance C2, the rezoning behind the mill. Is there anything in either the R2 or in the business zoning that would impede or affect how the mill could be used?
I don't believe so.
No, I mean, if the property surrounding it is rezoned to residential, I mean, that doesn't impact the use of the mill property that's owned by the village.
How much of the mill is owned by the village?
Just the footprint, basically.
The total building? And that little parcel of land nearby?
And the parcel in front of the mill to Corning, yeah.
And then east to the next landowner's property?
No.
Okay, so that's part of the questionable zoning portion?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so that would become available for any purposes, either zoning of someone who bought that.
So if somebody wanted to put a driveway there or something, they could?
Correct.
Yeah, for access, but it would be zoned residential, so.
I mean, if you're asking like if, so the person who wants to buy that, you know, has expressed his desire to continue to let the historical society use that property, there's nothing that the village would say, oh, no, you can't put a festival there because it's residential zoning. I think I'm speaking for the board on that. So there's, you know, there's nothing that would prevent us from continuing to use that the way it is.
Would there be an easement or some binding agreement?
That's something that we're in discussions with the potential owner.
Because I, you know, sometimes lots of promises are maybe for a marriage that change after the event.
Yeah.
How does the mill fit into the long-term planning of the town? Is it part of, okay, I learned that the Tiff district downtown doesn't affect the mill.
Correct.
But it seems like the mill is vital to the future of the town and to potential for tourism or, okay, being an old school teacher, I really think the third and fourth graders should know about the mill, should come and see it if it's possible. I think the high school kids could do podcasts and could do research and those kinds of things. So I would like to see personages from the mill, from the village, from the school, and be a vacation group, you know, start to work together towards some comprehensive plan for the mill use and for the community use. I know some of us are old enough to remember various ebbs and tides in terms of interest in the mill. And I'm not sure if we're approaching an ebb or the tide for the, but, you know, we've got a new logo, an adaptation of the mill, and it seems a little bizarre that it's not an integral part of the planning of the village.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we've always let, the history of this is that the village took that property over just to be able to provide liability insurance for the historical society. And we've always left it to the historical society to kind of do what they want with that. And unfortunately, the last few years, not a whole lot's been done. I don't know what else to say. I don't know if the board has any other comments on that, but.
Where does the bill fall in terms of the committees and the functions of the board? Is there, you know, a voice for the mill within the board? Or is it an albatross for public works?
You know, there's just a line item in the budget that, you know, support a little bit of money just for maintenance of it, but I don't know if that would be in the public works committee purview. But, I mean, I'll be honest with you. If you want some action to happen on that, it's going to have to come from the citizens. You know, and like I said, the historical society is a perfect venue for them, you know, for somebody to show that they want to do something with that and, you know, bring a plan to the board and, you know, go from there. I mean, I hate to say it, but I mean, we've got a lot of issues here in the village that we don't have the money to spend on everything. And so it's.
Was it representative of the historical society invited to the zoning meetings?
To the rezon, the zoning?
I got alerted because my property, lots of.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, you know, like, I feel kind of silly, you know, tooting the horn of the mill when it's older than I am. And there's nobody from the historical society that had either the West Main or whatever. So I wondered if they had been invited to.
No, they were, it was not part of the public notice. I'm sure they weren't.
All right. Is there a way to get, let them know that, I mean, that, or they should know what they're doing that, right? Rezoning that area or is it?
I mean, they don't, we own the property, so it's. I mean, I said, I would encourage the historical society to kind of step forward and step up if they want to do something with it. Unfortunately, like I said, we don't have the money to throw at that. Back in the, you know, early 90s, late 80s, there was quite a bit of fundraising done and got that mill to where it at least is stable. But, you know, that was never, you know, the village never gave money for that. It was all private fundraising, so. All right, any other public comment? If not, we'll go to reports of committees. Village administrator report.
I'm just going to focus on code today. And you have a code violations report in your packet. And we had a total of 44 violations in May, and 28 of them were weed violations. So it's weed season, and I just want to remind everyone to cut your weeds if they're over six inches. In addition, garbage cans and recycled containers cannot be stored in either at the curb after garbage has been picked up or in the front of the home. So those need to go on the side and out of view.
Okay. Any questions for the administrator? If none, we'll go to administrator, administrative oversight committee report.
Let's see, we met last on the 11th, I guess. Kind of a couple of the items here are on the agenda. We talked about revising the sticker program to go to a yearly program so it's less confusing for everybody. We discussed the potential use of some government funds that we're getting from the rescue, American Rescue Funds, but they're limited in what we can do with them. So we're kind of waiting to understand where those can be used and decided to support the local government distribution fund revenue letter that we sent. That's pretty much what we did.
Okay. And the village treasures report. Marcy.
Everyone has their copy of their treasures report in their packet. You'll see under the general fund for the month ending April 30th. Revenues and expenditures, revenues, we were at $220,000 and change. Expenses were $246,500-ish. Revenues are back in line with where we were previously in normal circumstances, so that's good to see again. We will start seeing revenue coming in from real estate taxes. As most of you have probably seen, if you got your real estate tax bill, the county's broken it down instead of two installments to four installments if you so choose, which will possibly take out some of the highs and lows that we have in receiving the money. Also, it will extend the period of time the county has to provide us all of the money. Typically, they give us our last installment in December, but the county treasurer indicated that we will go until January with the final payment then. Typically, by the time we get to December anyways, it's just a couple hundred dollars anyways. But they have extended it, so we'll see how it all goes. I wouldn't doubt if the county kind of sticks with this program if it's successful. So also on the treasures report, I wanted to comment. Under the MFT funds, you'll notice we had a significant increase, we had significant revenues that month of $84,623,000. I'm just going to break it down a little bit. $27,380,000 was reimbursement back from Corning Street, the construction project. And then the other $45,496 was our number three tranche from the rebuild Illinois grant. And I read recently that we can anticipate number four coming by July, actually, which I'm very surprised we're getting it this quickly, but we are. So we will have had our four installments. And by the end, we will have $273,000 in there for the Illinois rebuild grant. So we will need to start figuring something out to be used for it for next year. Because I, Troy, do we have till 2024, is it correct?
I think so, I think it's a couple of years, yeah.
Yeah, so, but, so yeah, so we'll kind of start thinking about that for next year's budget, knowing that it's getting here this quickly. So, and that's about it. Any other questions?
When do the Tiff fund, like, when do they send those?
Those come with the taxes, so. Tiff number one had just a small amount, but we did have a deposit on Thursday.
Okay.
But very small, we'll anticipate bigger amounts in June.
Okay. Great, any other questions for the treasurer?
The grant MFT, does it need to be spent on MFT projects?
Yeah, very specific projects, yes.
It's more restrictive than regular MFT.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Unfortunately, and we know how restrictive that is.
Right.
I mean, you're marking that for the West Street, the.
The phase one of it?
Phase two, I thought the south of the West.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the phase that, the East one.
Yeah.
South phase, I know you talked about that, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Police chief report.
Not really much to bring up. I do have a police committee tomorrow at 6:00 to discuss items on that. I'll bring it back to the board's open court.
Good. Everybody should have gotten an email from the chief with the reports. Did you guys see that?
Yeah.
Did you have a final, like, for the whole year, for last year? Did that?
Yeah, I did a final, I have that, it's still on computer.
Okay, send that to us.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Everything went okay yesterday with the car show?
Yeah.
No problems?
They ain't called me, so that's always a good sign.
Yep. All right, public works report.
All right. A few things. The Corning Avenue project is complete. There is a few punchless items that still need to be done. But other than that, it is complete. Thermoplastic is done. The repairs are done. So that's good to go. The trees we planted this year and last year, the department, we put gator bags on them this past week as the weather gets hot. We'll have to water these weekly. Just nice to plan with that. Summer projects, Wilson and North Street are under IDOT review. And also is Alborn Storm sewer project is still under review. As you can see, the flags are up for Memorial Day. The hanging baskets are coming this week. Kept them in the sunrise a little longer, which worked out pretty well with the heat we had. So they'll be up for the holiday, so.
Great. I wanted to thank Bob for getting that railroad property mowed by the Quonset hut on West Street that was looking really ragged. So Bob went out there and mowed it. And we've got a plan going forward to make sure that gets mowed on a regular basis. So thanks for that.
One more thing, there is a couple ideas, I think, back to March and myself, we're working on hometown hero banners, possibly. Right now, I'm looking into the costs. Something we can look forward to, so.
Is that something that maybe we could have the public if they were interested? Did they buy it for the family?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're looking into that as we speak, so. Go ahead.
Great, any questions? Questions, Bob? You got something else?
I just want to remind everyone of the Memorial Day service at cemetery. 10 o'clock Monday, there's no parade. Everybody's meeting out there, right?
Perfect.
I have a question.
Yes.
You were talking about the Quonset hut, who owns that now?
The railroad, yeah.
The railroad does own it.
Yeah. I mean, they've owned it forever.
Oh, the lease drop?
Yeah, they kicked the, you know, person out and they're just storing office equipment in there now, so.
Are we going to cut it and just bill them back?
Yeah, we actually made an agreement with a local landscaper to cut it and we're going to then, you know, charge the railroad for that.
What kind of deal where we can apply it to the purchase of that property?
Yeah, all right, well, I tried, yeah. I mean, I actually brought that up, but, so I haven't heard back on that yet. But anyway, we do it in our ordinance, if we cut somebody's lawn, it's $300. And so we, we made arrangements so that we don't use our own equipment. We've got a local landscaper doing it for.
$300 per hour.
Per hour, yes, per hour, so, so, yeah. Anyway, all right. Before we go on, though, this was National Public Works Week. I think it was actually last week, but I want to declare a proclamation here. Whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services, there are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the village of Peaton, Illinois. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the village of Peaton, Illinois to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, resolve that I, Peter March, village president, do hereby designate the week, May 16th through the 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. And I, this is done at the village of Peaton this 24th day of May 2021. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the engineer report. Troy?
A few project updates. Bob mentioned a few of them, the resurfacing project. We're finishing up the design and we'll be going back and forth with IDOT. We're anticipating a later in June bid opening for that. So construction should start hopefully early in July for that project.
For the West Street or for the North and Wilson Street?
For the MFT resurfacing, North and Wilson, yeah. We, we don't have an update on the West Street one yet. IDOT has not scheduled a pre-construction meeting yet. And we just have to wait for them to do it before anything can happen.
Okay.
It's been awarded to the contractor.
Oh, it is, okay.
But no, they haven't scheduled the meeting yet.
Okay.
So.
Who's the contractor?
P.T. Pharaoh.
Okay. Anything new to report on your engineering of the Wilmington Road sidewalk?
Nothing new there. We are still waiting on the titles and right-of-way documents for Wilmington Road before we can start design. We want to know what, where all the easements and right-of-way is. So we're still waiting from the title company and from Mo County on a couple of documents we requested. The L1 storm sewer project, we're working on the sizing and the options for that storm sewer. So we'll be getting into the design of that more soon. And then I, I know we discussed, we're just starting up working on GIS for the village, which will kind of give a portal for aliases and useful information. So we're just getting started on that. And we did talk to Aqua about getting started on the water and sewer extension project under 57. So we're just trying to work out some details with them and then hopefully we can get moving on that one, too.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for the engineer? Speaking of Aqua, Angie said she couldn't be here today, but really, there's nothing new to report. They're still waiting to hear from the Illinois EPA on connecting the water. So they are meeting with Terry's Ford this week. They don't like the lift station in front of there and because one of the conditions of our sale to Aqua, they had agreed to try to mitigate how that looks. So they're meeting with them to get that straightened out, so. All right. Last report, Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee Report.
Yep, we met on May 20th. There's one, one public person there. Vidette was there. Trustee Sluse had put together a report finding she interviewed all the business owners in the downtown revitalization area. I believe there's 25 owners interviewed. Feedback from those, I think you shared it with the entire board, correct? That year report?
We had, I think it was like 21 business owners that were okay with the one-way and for it, liked it a lot better. There was four that didn't want to change the parking at all. So the majority was for the one-way.
We also had to discuss the railroad parking. Committee was for exploring the railroad purchase. And we also talked about maybe getting a price on leasing all of it right up to the railroad edge. And we wanted to find out the cost on that. We also talked about maybe going forward with a design for just railroad parking ahead of the downtown stuff to see what a budgetary cost on that would be. We also talked about the upwind design. I think there was some confusion, what have we paid for to date? And what do we get for that? And we wanted some clarity on that. And that was about it, unless I missed anything.
Any questions? Not? We will move forward. We have no old business, new business payment request from J&amp;J New Old Concrete Contracts, an amount of $15,641.38 for the 2020 DCEO ADA Sidewalk Ramp Replacement. This is the final payment. So Troy, are we good?
Yeah, they finished up the work earlier this year. They kind of dragged their feet on submitting the invoice, but the good news is the project came in within the budget. So all the construction, all the engineering is paid for as part of the grant. So the village didn't have to spend any money on this.
So this will get reimbursed?
Did Marcy take?
I think, she may have already gotten the money or she will submit reimbursement, Marcy's going to do it now.
So Bob, are you good with this?
Yes, it's complete.
It's complete?
Yeah.
They've done all the restoration?
Sure.
Are they going to get rid of the dirt hill or are you guys going to have to do that?
They'll get rid of the dirt hill.
All right. Any questions?
That's actually separate from this project.
Oh, it is, separate, okay. Any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to make that payment.
Motion, second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, second by trustee Maravka.
Roll call vote. Sluse?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item B, liquor license for Susie's Saloon. We need to, since Susie's is going to be sold, we need to issue the license to the new owners. If we go ahead with this, we're still waiting on background check?
Background check and drap shop insurance.
So we prove this, we want to put it with those two conditions.
And maybe even just closing on the property?
Well, right, yes, exactly.
Soon.
Yeah. Questions at all? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve a liquor license for the new owners of Susie's Saloon.
What motion is it?
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Jones.
Roll call vote. Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Sterba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and item C, ordinances. Number one, appropriation ordinance for the village of Peaton, Will County, Illinois, April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2022. So in your packet was the actual appropriations and that's what we just had our public hearing on. So. So, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that ordinance, which will be twenty-one dash oh five.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Maravka.
Roll call vote, Ham?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Slus?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so next is an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located north of the Peatown Mill and south of Wood Street, Peatown, Illinois, from B-two retail and service businesses district to R-three-one family residence district. So, just a, a little bit of history, I mean, if you, there was a report in there from the Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission. And so, originally, when that property, when the mill was donated to the village, only the, like we talked about where the mill is sitting and directly in front of the mill was donated to the village, the property surrounding the mill from the, on the north side and east side of the mill was always kept. And Mr. Rachi, who donated the property, had requested that that be zoned B-two because he thought maybe in the future, if the mill became a tourist attraction, that he could build some kind of restaurant, gift shop, something like that. So, it's been kind of like that for probably twenty-five years or so. You know, just looking over the zoning maps, we didn't think that, at this point, that that's a good zoning for that area in the middle of the residential district, so the village, so we had the Planning, Zoning Commission look at this and you can see their report, they recommended that we rezone it to R-three. Any questions at all?
When you talk about the land in front of the mill, does the village own from the front of the mill all the way to Corning?
Yes.
And do you think we can lock the purchaser into granting the mill a permanent easement?
I don't want to, you know, promise anything, but I did, I have spoken with him and he seemed very agreeable to that.
Can you make it a condition?
Oh, the sale? I don't know if we're party that say.
I mean, if he comes into the village for any kind of variance, we can make it a condition of the variance.
So, he does want to put an auxiliary structure back there. And that wouldn't be conforming, you can't put an auxiliary structure on a, on a property without a house on it, you own a residential district. So, you can't just put up a garage on an empty lot. So, he would have to come in for variance on that. So, at that time, you know, if we decided to grant the variance, we could put that as a condition, that he grants permanent easement to the village.
Is he still gonna buy even though the zoning is changing on him?
Yes. He doesn't want to put a business there, it's just a storage building.
He lives right next door.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion approving a rezoning from B-two to R-three. This will be ordinance twenty-one dash oh six.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Sterba.
Roll call vote, Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Slus?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Motion carried.
Next item is ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement between the county of Will and the village of Peatown for the provision of animal control services. This is, we discussed this last time and voted to approve this, but we needed a, we needed an ordinance to make it official and the police committee is gonna be discussing this tomorrow on kind of how we want to implement this, so. Entertain a motion to approve, this will be ordinance twenty-one dash oh seven.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Maravka.
Roll call vote, Jones?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Slus?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item four, ordinance amending title, seventh, chapter seventy, section seventy-point-two-one and seventy-point-two-three, and repealing section seventy-point-two-four of the Code of Peatown in regard to vehicle licensing. So, trustee Bowden, would you like to explain this one?
Sure, currently the ordinance is, is that we buy stickers every two years, which causes plenty of confusion, I think, for most folks. I think the history of that was, it was just easier for the office to only deal with stickers once a year, than once every two years, right post every year, but the reality is, most everywhere else, one year and everybody just expects to do them. We also moved up the, the timing and, and got it done earlier in the year. And I think we raised the stickers five dollars is all we did, so instead of fifty dollars for two years, it's now thirty dollars for one year. Did there, just to make it easy on everybody to remember, get your sticker at the start of the year.
Questions?
And there is a senior, senior decrease, it's twenty bucks instead of thirty for the sticker, up to two cars.
Say that again, babe.
Seniors get twenty, get a, a ten-dollar decrease on the sticker, sixty-two and older.
Up to two cars, you said, right?
Up to two cars, yep. Figure if you got more than two cars, you probably can afford an extra ten bucks.
Discussion at all?
I think it will make a lot of people, it'll just be easier to remember.
Yep, there was a lot of confusion, especially this year with the mess last year.
Yep, just cleans that all up, I think.
All right, so.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
By trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee.
Yep. Jones.
Jones. And this will be ordinance twenty-one dash oh eight.
Okay, roll call vote, Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Slus?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, a couple of resolutions next, and these have to do with our state government, so first one is a resolution supporting restoration of local government distributive, the distributive fund, LGDF revenue. So, there's a resolution in your packet supporting the restoration of LGDF revenue. I don't think I'm gonna read through it all, but just when this revenue was put into place, we were receiving ten percent of the revenue that's collected from local income tax. And now it's been reduced to six-point-oh-six percent. And in the governor's budget for this coming year, he wants to re, the government, the governor requested a, a further ten percent reduction. So, that just means, you know, we'll get ten percent less from the, from income tax that is collected and, you know, places the burden on the municipalities to come up with other sources of revenue. So, this is just a revenue, a, a resolution to show our support and once we approve this, this will get forwarded to, I believe the Will County Government League requested this, right? And just to, you know, show our support and hopefully our legislators will listen to it, they're, you know, they're coming up to the end of their session here at the end of the month and so, you know, hundreds of bills get pushed through in the last couple of days and, you know, we're hoping that, you know, we can prevent this from, from happening, so.
How much will it cost us?
Well, I'm not sure how much we get from our income, from this income tax, but I'm sure, you know, it's in the neighborhood of tens of, you know, ten thousand, tens of thousands of dollars, I'm sure. Is there a motion for this, this will be resolution twenty-one dash R-oh-four.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Slus, seconded by trustee Maravka.
Roll call vote, Slus?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Sterba?
Yes.
All right, the.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next resolution is opposing Senate Bill twenty-two ninety-eight amending the Tax Increment Allocation Act of the Municipal Code. For some reason, the legislature wants to take away one of the, you know, very few tools that municipalities have to bring in economic development, so they want to reduce the length of a TIF from twenty-three years to ten years. And the way TIFs work, you get the most money in those final years of the TIF, so to only have it last ten years is, you know, hardly makes it worth it to put it together. Our TIF is safe, I mean, they're not being retroactive, but I mean, just in the future, it really, it's going to seriously impact the way these things work. So, again, this is a resolution opposing this and, you know, we'll send this to the Will County Government League to, and the, I think this one was actually from IML, right?
It was from the Tax Increment Association of Illinois.
Yeah, so just again, to give them more ammunition when they talk to legislators, that this is not something we really want, so.
What's their thought process behind that?
Do you know?
It, it, there's a continual attack to try to erode the benefits because I think that there's just been some misuse, unless you know it of any, anything else.
I don't, I just assumed it was one of those general attacks.
So, there's just some legislators that just are not into TIF.
So. So, this would be resolution twenty-one dash R-oh-five. Entertain a motion.
Motion is.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Slus.
Roll call vote, Maravka?
Yes.
Slus?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sterba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item E, recommendation to purchase property adjacent to Railroad Street for purposes of improving property for community parking lot. And trustee Jones is excused from this, I guess?
Yes, as, as always, as someone who owns property in the TIF, it's prohibited by state law from taking part in these discussions, so.
E, but it's the last item on the agenda, he just had it out. Okay, so, we've been in communication with CN Railroad. We would, you know, we currently lease the parking lot from Corning, I'm sorry, yeah, from Corning to Main Street on this side of the track, so this is part in front of the village hall complex. And then we also rent on the west side of the tracks from Main to Crawford. The railroad is willing to sell us fifty feet of this parking area, which is what we lease right now in front of the village hall. They only want us, they only want to let us purchase twenty feet of the lot from Main to Crawford, so the twenty feet closest to Railroad Street. They are willing to lease us the rest of that land that we already are leasing. So, the purchase price for what we would purchase is twenty-five thousand. And then they, they would give us a ten-year lease for the rest of it for twelve-hundred dollars a year and they want a payment upfront, so it'd be twelve thousand dollars. The little blue storage shed that used to be the old fire station where we store some public works equipment that is included in the purchase, so we would own that bill, and we own the building already, but it's, it was on, you know, leased land, so they're gonna give us that property. So, the theory behind this that came out of the downtown meeting is that, you know, we'd like to move forward with making Railroad Street, the Railroad Street parking lot kind of be the stimulus for our downtown rehab. And it would maybe be an easy way to get started on it and make that look nice and, you know, maybe stimulate the community demand, that would be the same thing on Second Main Street, so.
Why, question again is, why, why are they not allowing us to buy all of it and just leasing part of it?
So, that's a good question. And you'd have to go back to the beginning of last century for that answer. So, Railroad, how do I want to start? So, the railroad has, they originally had a hundred feet on each side of the center line of the property, okay? So, two hundred feet wide. So, like on this side of tracks, they're gonna give us fifty, so there's still gonna be fifty feet to the center line, okay? On the other side, at the turn of the century, the village sued the railroad because we, the village had always maintained what became Railroad Street. And one day the railroad said, no, that's ours, you can't go down the street. And so, the village sued and went all the way up to the Illinois Supreme Court and they awarded the village thirty feet, which is our Railroad Street now. So, from Railroad Street to the center line is seventy feet. So, they want to let us buy twenty feet, so now it's gonna be fifty feet from the center line, just like it'll be on this side.
Okay.
But they're allowing us to lease.
The rest of it.
More, so that, you know, we could put that parking lot there. I hope that answers your question.
A little history lesson.
Yes.
So, are we, so we're buying from Main north to Crawford? And then are we also buying Main south to Corning? Or just north?
So, on this side, so Main south to Corning.
The two hatched areas, is that what we're buying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was easier.
Yeah.
So, we're getting both, we're getting.
Yes.
And then we're leasing the, the other.
Yeah, okay. And the idea then is to have our design company give us, move forward with designing that parking area and giving us some concrete numbers to work with, so we decide if we want to move forward with that part of the project.
Yeah, and again, the ad hoc committee, I think that's kind of what we came up with, was that parking on Second Street is very comfort, very hard to figure out and get consensus. But everybody probably agrees that doing something on Railroad Street is a good idea because right now it looks terrible, and so let's start there and let's move this thing forward and take an eyesore and turn it into something attractive and then also provide more parking and more light. and then also provide more parking and more lighting and more illumination, and then propel that into a larger project down the line. Everybody seemed to agree that cleaning up Railroad Street parking was a good idea. Nobody was against that.
And it's not just the parking, we would be, you know, redoing that street and the sidewalk, which, and we're not going to increase the width of that sidewalk, but it's pretty, it's a disaster right now, so.
There's no clear start and end from the railroad to the buildings.
No, right.
It just kind of just morphs into gravel and sidewalk and weeds and.
Yeah.
We'd probably be paving all that, probably, right? Hard paving, or is it going to be like a, zip it and skimcoat it, like a two-inch layer?
Yeah, it's, we'll have to see what the design company recommends, and then we'll have to see what we can afford then to, yeah. Because right now, I think it's just, I think it is tarred chip, I'm not sure if it's paved or not right now.
Yeah, that could be another option, because they say you only have it for 10 years, you only spend all the money on asphalt and everything, and then 10 years, they come in and say, well, we're going to lease you again.
Right.
Tear it up.
Yeah, I kind of doubt that they would ever, I mean, I can't predict the future, but it encourage me, encourages me that they, they let us purchase the building area there because what it, they can't do it, you know, there's no straight line now, you know? It's not like they're going to be able to put something in there. So that's, I feel more comfortable doing, you know, fixing up that part of the area, but, yeah, well, that.
Do they decline for the depot?
Yes. Yeah, so I, I just, you know, as long as I was talking to them, I asked about the depot area, and that they, for some reason, they're not interested in selling that, so.
Oh, they still own it?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
And they own the land around there, which we mow and send them expensive bills that they pay.
Is there a reason that they wanted the lease payment in full, in 10-year full? It's kind of odd, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like they want it all at once and then.
Right.
It's going to be after 10 years.
Right.
Maybe because we weren't very good at making our other payments. It's like a tenant that does his pay late, got to have it all front.
Sure their, I'm sure their checks will come in late too.
Yeah, so, and I did bring up about, you know, mowing, you know, that we, you know, if we want, but they never responded to me on that one, because I just said, you know, we already mowed some of your property. But to be honest with you, our bill that we send them is more, a lot more than our lease payments are right now. A lot more.
And they pay them?
They pay them.
Okay.
I think it's a good deal. So I will make the motion that we do this.
So we're just looking for consensus, it's a discussion item on the agenda, so we can't.
We're not voting, can't action.
We just wanted to get your consensus to move forward with a contract.
Yeah, so I'll have, it sounds like there's no big objection, so I'll have the, I'll contact the railroad. They said they just needed the okay, and they'll, you know, drop the contract, and then we can approve it at that point.
So we'll bring that back to you to vote on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the plan that Upland submitted for that area, I thought was, was great.
Yeah.
I think, I think we got a lot of what we need to get moving.
And I directed Upland to go ahead and move forward on that part of the plan. They were pretty confident they could have something to us, you know, by the end of June, but they don't give us some ideas what it would cost and all that, so.
Great.
Okay. All right, questions on the press? Okay. Any other discussion items from the trustees?
When we build a railroad for cutting grass and stuff like that, does part of the money go back into like a fund to buy like lawnmowers from, like the wear and tear, like when we cut the grass? That's an easy way to put it.
Yeah, right.
You know?
Um, it, I mean, right now, it just goes into the, the general fund. But yeah, that's always a concern, I mean, that's why I really didn't want to get involved in cutting the grass on West Street because that would be a lot of wear and tear on those mowers, so.
Well, you better, it takes two hours to cut, that's $600.
Yeah.
You cut it 10 times, you're at almost a lawnmower, right?
Right, exactly. I got a couple of items. I want to congratulate the Peatone Car Club for a nice downtown event yesterday. Like Bob said, we want to start this Hometown Heroes banner program where, I don't know what you call it, borrowing or stealing the idea from Mantino, but they were very helpful in helping us get it off the ground. So you'll be seeing some more of that once we have a little bit more information for you. Blood Drive sponsored by the Village, it's going to be at the Legion on Wednesday. I think there's just like two spots open, but otherwise, it's full. So thanks for, our administrator Amy for setting that up. Block Party, June 18th and 19th, correct?
Yep.
Volunteers are needed to run the beer tent, correct?
Yes.
So if any trustees want to get involved in that. Community Garage Sales are the same weekend, so residents feel free to sign up for that. Yep, and I'm very excited we're moving forward with, you know, at least a small aspect of the downtown rehab, and I think it's really going to be a nice starting point to jump off and get the rest of it done, so. Anything else?
Can we enter anything back from IDOT on the interchange?
We're all good with IDOT. It's, we're waiting, the, the, the flock, what's it, the flea, what is that term? Anyway, the problem is with getting easement from the farm.
Oh, okay, we're back on easement, okay.
So we thought that that had been resolved, but it doesn't seem like that's going to be, we were trying to negotiate something, and it doesn't look like that's going to happen. So we're moving forward with the eminent domain proceedings.
That's bummer.
Did I say enough without saying too much?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, anything else? Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Moravka, seconded by Trustee Sluse.
Roll call vote. Moravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones? Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That was great.
And after thought, after the whole discussion.
That's my role. Tell her to shut off the cameras.